Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Agora Hills City Council meeting. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card for each item and submit to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. I will now call this meeting to order. I'm going to read our land acknowledgement. The city of Agora Hills acknowledges that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Chumash Nation. Descendants of Chumash still remain and we honor and pay our respects to their elders and various groups that make up the past, present, and emerging as they continue their stewardship of our lands and waters. We have a responsibility and commitment to elevate the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of the city of Agora Hills, and we are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. I will now defer to Cub Scout Pat 227 for the pledge of allegiance.
Attention. Will the audience please rise? Color guard advance. Hand salute. Those not in uniform, please put your right hand over your heart. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard, post the colors. Color guard salute. Two. Color guard dismissed. The audience may be seated.
Thank you so much, Cub Scout Pat 227. We really appreciate you being here this evening. I will now defer to our city clerk for the roll call.
Good evening. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Anstead?
Here.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Wolf?
Here.
Mayor Sylvester?
Here.
Mayor Sylvester, you have a quorum.
Thank you. The report out of closed session, I will defer to city attorney Lee.
Yes, thank you. Direction was given to staff. No reportable action was taken this evening. That concludes my report. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Will the maker of the motion and a second to approve the agenda state your names?
This city councilman, Chris Anstead, I make the motion to approve our agenda.
Mayor Pro Tim Wolf, I will second.
I'll defer to the city clerk for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson? Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval five to zero.
Thank you. We have two presentations this evening. The first is a proclamation recognizing Military Appreciation Month, and I'm going to defer to councilmember Anstead.
All right. I'm gonna first read our proclamation and then I'll call up our honoree after that. So, this is, as the mayor mentioned, this is Military Appreciation Month. In 1999, Congress designated May as National Military Appreciation Month to remind all Americans of the vital role the U.S. Armed Forces have played in building and protecting our country. Military Appreciation Month is a time for all Americans to reflect on the strength, dedication, and sacrifice of our military community, including their families who support them from home. This year marks the 10th anniversary of American Supporting Americans, ASA, Greater Cano, an outstanding local organization dedicated to supporting service members and their families through outreach, care packages, community events, and public awareness efforts that reflect the highest values of civic engagement and gratitude. The city of Agora Hills is honored to support ASA Greater Cano in its mission, the Adopt a Unit program, which connects our community with military units across the nation to build lasting relationships and show ongoing support. Over the past decade, ASA Greater Cano has had a meaningful and lasting impact, offering encouragement to countless service members and inspiring a strong sense of appreciation and involvement throughout the Cano Valley. The city of Agora Hills recognizes and commends ASA Greater Cano for its dedicated service and reaffirms its ongoing support for efforts that honor and assist members of the United States Armed Forces and their families. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Agora Hills proudly supports ASA Greater Cano and its mission of service and unity. Now, therefore, be it further resolved, the city council of the city of Agora Hills does hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Military Appreciation Month and encourages all residents, businesses, schools, and community organizations to join in honoring, supporting, and expressing gratitude to our military members and their families. And now, I would ask that the president of Americans Supporting Americans, ASA, Jim Sumner, please approach the dais, and I would like to award him the certificate that I just read. Jim, in simple words, thank you very much for all your service to all the service members out there and your dedication and hard work from the city of Agora Hills. You got it. Jim, hold on, I wanna, I wanna get a picture with you. We're gonna get a picture, and then we're gonna let you say a few words. Go ahead and hold it up, and then I'll put this behind. Would you like to say a few words?
Good.
Thank you, attorney.
Yes, ASA has been here for 10 years, as Chris said, and we send packages to our troops overseas. So, in the 10 years we've been in business, we shipped over 5,000 packages to the troops. We have a big event coming up on Flag Day, June 14th, that hopefully you'd like to come to. It'll be in the Janes Mall. But we'll have a lot going on that day, a lot of military vehicles there and singing going on. There'll be buglers and bagpipers, so an awful lot going on, celebrating the Army's 250th birthday and also the day that the U.S. flag was adopted in 1777. Thank you, Chris.
Awesome. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. You got it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Today, May 14th, 2025, marks Childhood Apaxia of Speech Day, during which awareness will be raised about childhood apaxia of speech, an extremely challenging speech disorder that affects one in 1,000 children. Childhood apaxia of speech, also known as CAS, causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech deficits in children. The act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children. Those with apaxia require early, appropriate, and intensive speech therapy, often for many years, to learn how to speak. Without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with apaxia will have diminished communication skills but are also placed at high risk for secondary impacts in reading, writing, spelling, and other school-related skills. That such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities and challenge the ability to become productive, contributing citizens if not resolved or improved. Public awareness about childhood apaxia of speech in Agora Hills is essential for families of children with this neurological disorder and the professionals who support them to achieve the needed services for those learning to use their own voice. Our highest respect goes to these children as well as their families for their effort, determination, and resilience in the face of such obstacles. Apaxia Kids is the leading nonprofit that strengthens the support systems in the lives of children with apaxia of speech. Please visit www.apaxiakids.org for more information. As mayor and on behalf of the entire city council, I do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 14th, 2025, to be Apaxia Awareness Day in the city of Agora Hills, and citizens of Agora Hills and surrounds are encouraged to work within their communities to increase awareness and understanding of childhood apaxia of speech. And I would just like to say, our thoughts go out to all our families who are dealing with this issue. And I have a beautiful proclamation here that we are going to be sending out to a family that requests that we honor this day. Thank you. You want to?
Right. I will now, we now move on to Intergovernmental Special Purpose Committee and Departmental Reports. I will defer to councilmember Klein Lopez for the Clean Power Alliance update.
I will save you my comments until next month when we have, we're deep in budgeting and rate setting as well, so I'll give you a complete summary when we're done with all that.
Thank you. Are there any reports from staff? Seeing none, any other reports from city council? No? Lovely. So, now we're into public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. If you have something to distribute to the city council, please do not approach the dais. Hand your item to the city clerk, and she will distribute it to us on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the city council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. No written correspondence was received. We do have speaker cards. Our first speaker is Jennifer Miller, followed by Steve Lloyd.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes to speak, ending when the red light appears on the podium. You may begin.
Okay. My dog is afraid to go to the park. I know you've talked about e-bikes at length, but I'm just gonna give you a couple things to say that I want to say. He loved, he used to love going to the park. I'd take him to the park. I'd drive him to the park because I can't walk, because I have pulmonary hypertension. Can't walk up the hill. He doesn't want to get out of the car. He's frightened. He's frightened on Canwood. He's frightened on Forest Cove, and he's frightened in the park. So, where do I walk my dog? I did get him out of the car. We walked in the park, and I met a woman with her dog, and a car door slammed, and my dog jumped. And I said, "I'm sorry." He's fine. It's just because he's afraid of noises now because of the e-bikes. She said, "Oh, my God. They were driving past me the other day, and they told me I had a fat ass. They screamed at me, I had a fat ass." And her friend was driving, or her friend was somewhere, and told them kids they couldn't ride in the park, and they threw rocks at her car. So, it's now becoming dangerous. Whatever, and I know that someone has presented to the sheriff and to Amy video of a kid just a couple days ago doing wheelies in traffic. Obviously, the sheriff is trying. It's not working. There needs to be rules made for our city because right now it's being run by teenage hoodlums and their parents. Every e-bike has to have an identifier on the back, a number of some kind, or a chip, like a card reader. I don't care what it is. I'm not a mechanic. I'm not an engineer. Something on the back of their helmet, and if that helmet is tampered with or this tag is tampered with, they lose the bike. And not lose the bike so their mother can come pick it up for $500. They lose the bike. They lose the privilege. We need to crack down on these kids who are literally running our city right now. I'm afraid to go out. My dog is afraid to go out. Will it take someone dying from a rock being thrown, they swerve their car, they hit a pedestrian, before the city really, really gets serious? And if you want to ban e-bikes, and I know you're gonna say, "Oh, we can't do that." Well, better to ask forgiveness than permission. Let them take you to court. Do something before somebody gets killed. And I will say this, this is a completely separate topic. I think it would be great if Agora Hills could become a sanctuary city, even if it's only in name only and symbolic only. I don't anticipate raids here, but we need to make a stand for people of the South American countries and defend them. And I apologize for not standing during the pledge of allegiance. I hope it didn't offend anyone. I cannot stand for this flag right now, and I cannot pledge allegiance under God because I'm an atheist, and I'm proud to be an atheist. I'm sorry if that offends anybody.
Thank you. I would just like to note that city council cannot make any comments on the public comment section.
Understood.
But we refer you to staff. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve Lloyd.
Thank you, Mayor Sylvester and councilmembers. My name is Steve Lloyd. I've lived in Agora for 14 years. I own and work in a local business. I'm scout master of the local scout troop, 127. I've been president of the Media Valley Homeowners Association for the last five years. We're located along Cannon Road. I'm sure you know where that is, a mile south of Agora Road. My neighborhood barely survived the Woolsey Fire in 2018. We had flames right up to our doorsteps. I'm a big fan of this community, but I've never attended one of these meetings except as scout master with my own scouts. So, I'm mostly here in a learning capacity, but I also want to make a brief statement about the, it's probably a topic that you've addressed when I, you know, I haven't been here, and I'm sure this has been beaten to death, but the increasing density along Agora Road that I've seen plans for and at the intersection of Cannon and Agora, it's, it's becoming a real concern among the people in my neighborhood, and I know quite a few people in the community because of my activity in the scout troop and, and my business. And this is really becoming a problem for people. I don't think they've really come out yet against this because it hasn't been real until they've, for example, now seen the movie theater being torn down. But there's a lot of angst out there, and it's really growing. It's not abstract. It's now a reality, and people are really concerned. So, I've told that, I've told my HOA fellow board members that I would come here and kind of feel out how this works with the Agora City Council. I know you're dealing with laws that come down from the state, and to some extent, our hands are tied, but I have to believe there's something that we can do to do the right thing by this community. It's putting a lot of development up along that intersection in particular is really going to degrade and make less safe that part of Agora. That's an evacuation route that has no other alternatives in, in a situation like I saw in the Woolsey Fire. So, we need to do something. I don't know what that is. Maybe you do. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, and I'm glad you came, and I hope you'll come back again. We always like to hear from the public. Are there any other speakers?
There are no further speaker cards.
Thank you. All right. We are now moving on to the consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. I will defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. We did not receive any written correspondence or speaker cards.
Thank you. Are there any questions from city council on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will call for a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar.
Make a motion to adopt the consent calendar. Deborah Klein Lopez?
City councilman, Chris Anstead, seconds.
Thank you. I will defer to the city clerk for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval five to zero.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution 25-2101, adopting the 2025 City of Agora Hills Transportation Impact Fee Nexus Study and Transportation Impact Fee Capital Improvement Program, amending transportation impact fees and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. I will now defer to the Director of Public Works, city engineer Charmaine Yambau.
Good evening, Mayor Sylvester, members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2025 Agora Hills Transportation Impact Fee Program Update, or commonly referred to as the TIF program. The TIF program plays a critical role in ensuring that new development contributes its fair share to the necessary improvements to the city's transportation infrastructure needed to support the expected volume of traffic generated from new development through the TIF fees. Today's presentation will cover the TIF nexus analysis, proposed 2025 TIF Capital Improvement Program project list, and the proposed 2025 updated TIF fee schedule. I would also like to introduce our consultants joining us here tonight, Chris Gregerson to my right with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, and Matt Stewart, the city's traffic engineer, also with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Our agenda for this presentation is to simply state the purpose for the TIF program update, next to provide a background of the city's TIF program to provide context to the TIF program update, the methodology behind the nexus study, the results of the study's deficiency analysis for the need of transportation system improvements to accommodate new development, and then next, a proposed TIF Capital Improvements Program project list, then to present the proposed TIF fee schedule update, and last, the recommendations before the city council tonight on this item. The purpose of the TIF program update is to revise the TIF fees and the list of capital improvement projects, including associated costs in today's dollars. To implement TIF fees, a nexus analysis required to demonstrate a reasonable relationship between the anticipated development, the need for new infrastructure, and the fees imposed. This ensures that the fees charged are proportionate to the impact of the development. To meet this requirement, technical reports are prepared to provide the necessary analysis and justification. Updates and nexus studies for TIF fees and improvement projects are required to be completed every eight years. It is important to note that minor adjustments to the project fees or project descriptions can be made more frequently as projects develop or to account for the cost of inflation. The nexus study report evaluated- The nexus study report evaluates and justifies the TIF program update by identifying the expected growth within the city from existing to future year, and in the city's case, that's 2024 to 2040, determining how the city's transportation network will operate with increased demand from future development by building on current city plans and policies, estimating those improvement project costs, an analysis of the fair share costs of those improvement projects for new development, and describing how the TIF program update meets regulatory compliance requirements. Want to give a little bit of background to the TIF. The city first established an arterial streetscape, or I'm sorry, Star Street System Development Fee Program in 1988. The program was formally identified under Chapter Five, Article Eight of the City Municipal Code. This program is now commonly known as a Transportation Impact Fee, or TIF. With the update of the general plan in 2010 and its inclusion of the Complete Streets Act of 2007 as policy, the city's TIF program was restructured and updated in 2011. The City Council amended Chapter Five, Article Eight of the city's municipal code by replacing in its entirety with a new Chapter Five, titled Transportation Impact Fee, and established the TIF program fee amounts by adoption by resolution. The 2011 update included application of annual increases relative to the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index or the California Construction Cost Index to the TIF program fees. The 2011 update identified 10 projects. Of these 10 projects, six were completed, two partially completed, one is ongoing, and one was not completed. The one not completed was Cannon Road from Agoura Road to southerly city limits. This road segment is, not that it's not completed, but it's part of the Cannon Corridor Project and it has been ongoing and is currently in the early stage of planning and development. In 2017, the City Council approved the addition of adding five road segments and one intersection to the list of projects established in the 2011 update. These five projects were not completed, I'm sorry, the five projects were not completed, were modified by either the 2024 AVSP update or the 2022 general plan update, and one was completed. The majority of the improvement projects identified in the 2011 TIF program update and the 2017 additions have been completed or are programmed to be funded with Metro Although the 2011 update provided annual increases, the TIF program has remained unchanged for 14 years. The TIF program update proposes to adjust fees based on projections from the city's current policies and plans listed here on this slide. The 2022 General Plan and Housing Element Update, VMT thresholds, Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, the 2024 Agoura Village Specific Plan Update, and the Proposed Bicycle Master Plan. While past versions of the TIF program have focused on traditional increasing capacity improvement projects, the proposed TIF update presented today attempts a more holistic approach by identifying and funding projects that enhance non-auto modes of travel in an effort to reduce the demand for vehicle trips on the city's roadway network. Recognizing that adding vehicle capacity may not always be feasible or desirable, the 2025 TIF program update focuses on improvements and enhances alternate modes of travel and explores other improvement projects such as transportation technology, infrastructure that align with the city's goals for VMT reduction, complete streets, safety, and climate action. Over the past 18 months, staff has been working with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, the city's traffic engineer consultant, to complete the 2025 TIF nexus study, which is the report that provides the documentation required to demonstrate a reasonable relationship between the anticipated development, the need for new infrastructure, and the fees necessary to fund these identified transportation improvement projects. The proposed list of capital improvement, oops, I'm sorry, the city, I apologize. This slide is the current TIF fee schedule. The slide here is for reference if we should need to revisit this for further discussion. And now I'd like to hand over the presentation to Chris Gregerson, the city's consultant from Kim Lee Horn and Associates, who will present the details of the 2025 TIF nexus study, including the proposed 2025 TIF Capital Improvement Project List and the 2025 TIF fee schedule update.
Thank you, Charmaine. Good evening, Mayor Sylvester and members of the council. So what you see on this slide right here were the steps that were taken to complete the nexus analysis and support the findings in the report that are required by the Mitigation Fee Act. These steps resulted in the nexus between the improvements that we will show and the fees that are charged as part of the program. So first, we performed the deficiency analysis as we looked at two scenarios, existing and then existing plus the growth contained within the general plan in the housing, in the housing element. We had 30 study intersections and 48 roadway segments that we looked at, and our analysis resulted in 12 deficient intersections and 11 deficient roadway segments. So what you see here is a map of the results of the deficiency analysis. The green facilities did not have a deficiency while the remaining colors showed the deficiencies. And as you can see in the map, the deficiencies are spread out throughout the entire city. So as Charmaine mentioned, our approach to improvements focused on active transportation, transit, safety, technology or signal systems, turn pockets, and then signalization on a case-by-case basis. So the improvements that we chose were selected from city documents. So the bike facility improvements came from the city's bike master plan. The safety improvements came from the city's local road safety plan. The transit improvements focused on increasing existing services and adding additional park-and-ride lots. We also looked at timing improvements at existing signals and the overall city's citywide signal system, and then closing any identified sidewalk gaps. So this slide and the following to outline the 22 projects or improvements that were, that are proposed to be included on the Capital Improvement Program List. To go through the columns, we see the project description and then the total cost estimated to construct or implement the project. The remaining three columns focus on the proportionate share that new development pays. The Mitigation Fee Act states that new development can only pay its proportionate share. And so we performed an analysis to determine on a improvement by improvement basis what the share of new trips that caused the deficiency resulted in. So as you can see on this slide, that ranges from just over 25% to 100%. And so we multiply that share by the total cost to calculate the TIF eligible costs or the costs that is included in the TIF program. The remainder of those costs need to be identified from under other funding sources by the city. And this slide covers the bike improvements that we identified. And before we move on, I want to note that this is, the projects are grouped by project type. It's not an indication of priority at all. It's just the identification is used for mapping purposes, but they're grouped by project type. So this can be seen more like a menu of improvements rather than a priority list. The list on this slide focuses on our pedestrian improvements, transit improvements, and the beginning of our citywide improvements. And then the remaining three citywide improvements are listed. And so as you can see on this slide, the total estimated cost of the improvements is about $40.8 million, but only $23.7 million is eligible to be included in the program based on our proportionate share analysis or fair share analysis. So the remaining $17.1 million would have to be identified by the city through other funding sources. And then consistent with the city's existing TIF program and the structure of programs throughout the state, 2% of the eligible costs are used to help city staff administer the program throughout the life of the program. So the total cost used to calculate the fees is $24.2 million. So this map, similar to the deficiency map, shows our proposed improvements. As you can see, the improvements are located throughout the city, you know, in the location of those identified deficiencies. So just to summarize what you've seen on the past few slides, the total cost was roughly $40.8 million with 58% being associated with new development, trips from new development. So that's 23.7. And then when we add in the administration costs, we result in 24.2 million. And then we divide that by the total trips generated by new development. That's how we get the fees. The fee program has multiple different land use types. We use the ITE Trip Generation Manual. That's the industry standard for calculating trips generated by different land use types to get the total trips so that we have a metric to compare all the different land uses and how they generate trips. So the total number of trips, or the total cost is divided by the total trips to get the average cost per new trip, and then that is converted back into units for each type of land use to get the actual fee, which you'll see here on the next slide. So here is the proposed schedule for each land use. So we continued with the land use categories that are currently in the program from the 2011 update. So we have three different types of residential and then the other non-residential types. So you can see here, the residential are fees per dwelling unit, and then the non-residential is mostly fees per thousand square feet. So that's KSF is thousand square feet, and then rooms for hotel or acres for commercial recreation. And with that, I'll turn it back to Charmaine.
Thank you, Chris. So this is our final recommendation. The staff respectfully recommends that the City Council conduct a public hearing to consider adoption of Resolution Number 25-2101. The resolution adopts the 2025 City of Agoura Hills Transportation Impact Fee Nexus Study, adopts the 2025 Transportation Impact Fee Capital Improvement Program, and amends the transportation impact fees. This concludes our presentation. The team of Chris Gregerson, Matt Stewart, both from Kim Lee Horn and Associates, and myself are here to answer questions.
Thank you very much. There's a lot to look at here, and I think we've all spent quite a few hours absorbing it, but thank you for that report. Okay, so I've got a little note here. After the staff report, I'm going to open the public hearing before moving on to council questions. Do we have any speakers?
This would be the time period for council questions before public?
Oh, sorry. Beg your pardon. Council questions first. Who would like to start? Deborah Klein Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, I spent some frenzied time talking with Charmaine and Nate about this. It's not easy stuff. What I'd like to do first is ask you if my understanding of this at a 30,000-foot level is correct. So I'm going to repeat what I think just from a layman's term. You tell me if I'm not, if I'm not correct. Developers, when they have a project, pay into a fund, the TIF program. We use that money to improve circulation around town based on projects that we've all agreed on need help. Most of the projects that we have identified from 2011 are complete or have been moved out to other funding sources, right? We are here to update the fees and identify new projects for those fees to go to. And then future projects will pay this new fee based on the nexus study. And the majority of these projects that we're talking about are alternative transportation-like bike lanes. Anything that, did I get that right? Perfect. Okay. So with that, my questions are, what is our TIF account balance right now?
So our TIF balance is currently $1.3 million.
$1.3 million?
$1.3 million, but 336K is available right now for projects. There is approximately $964,000 that were used to front Measure R funds used on the Agoura Road widening. Once the audit is complete, and we're in it right now, those funds go back to TIF and the $1.3 million is whole for TIF projects.
So the TIF account always has to kind of have that balance in there to front grants if we, or to front funding? Do we always have to have that cushion in that account?
Not necessarily. That just depends on the council's goals and, you know, priorities.
Okay. And when is the last time that account was used on one of the projects that is now either complete or almost complete?
We used it a couple of years ago and it was on roadside.
For roadside? What year was that? Was it the bridge?
That was the bridge, so it, 24, it's in 2022.
So 2022. Okay. So when we have the funds in the account and we have the projects determined, what is the priority of what, when those funds are used for which project? Like, why did it go to roadside and not something, or why did it go to the other projects before roadside? Like, how do we, do we determine that? Do you determine that? How does that money get dispersed and in what priority order?
That would be council for priority of the projects, but that, for that instance, that project was under construction and we needed additional funds and it was in the TIF list, so it was eligible to receive TIF funding.
And we, as the council, okayed that?
Correct. So it went to council as probably there were change orders and those were, as far as the fiscal impact made aware to the council.
Okay. And for projects that are either underway or will soon to be underway, like, for example, Regency. I call it Regency. I don't know if it has, the Regency project that is deemed complete and is in progress but not built or occupied, are they paying the old rates or the new rates that we're
From what I understand from discussions, they are paying the current, based on when they put their application in and it was deemed complete, it would be per the current rates, which is the 2011 TIF fees.
So any project that's deemed complete before we update the fees get the 2011 rates, fees?
Certain projects, like the housing projects? But there are other projects out there, residential, non-residential. They would pay those fees at, either at certificate of occupancy or the final building inspection, whatever comes first. And when they pay that, it would be the current fee of when they pay the fees.
So say that again. So the Regency is, that's, that is, those are different rules? They don't pay on occupancy or completion?
That is correct. They're a housing, approved housing project. And they would pay based on when they were deemed complete, which was, will be, is before we approve this, if we shall approve this.
Okay. And then my last question for now is, so the, we looked at, or we updated rates in 2011, but then the council looked at rates in 2017, but chose not to, I'm assuming those nexus report from 2017 had higher rates than 2011, but the council chose not to adopt it. Is that correct?
I wasn't involved with the 2017, but I can tell you, there is a nexus study report and I've seen it and the rates are, as you would expect, higher.
Than 2011?
Than the 2011. It's somewhere in between where we have now the 2017 or the 2017. Than the 2011. It's somewhere in between where we have now the 2017 or the 2025 proposed today and what the 2011 one that was approved and the added segment. So to answer your question, yes, they were in the report higher.
Okay. And so most of us were not, none of us were here in 2017, but I don't know why they, I'm not going to understand, I don't know why they didn't raise the TIF fees, but I guess that just begs the question, is there a downside for us to do this? Is there any downside? Or why is it even, I don't know why they didn't raise the fees, but I guess maybe there was a reason. So what would that reason possibly be?
Again, I wasn't involved with that one. I wasn't--
Or was I?
Yeah. So it's hard to, I mean, I wouldn't have an answer for that.
But is there a downside? That's my question.
In my opinion, there are no downsides. This is a Nexus study that proves that we've, you know, with new projects, new development, there's deficiencies in our transportation system. The Nexus study provides that, that documentation that shows that this fee would go to these projects that would serve, basically the list of projects are like a menu to help mitigate the transportation impacts from new development. And it's important to note that, you know, Chris mentioned it, the TIF fees that we would collect pay a link, a portion of the project.
Right.
So obviously, it's an additional fund source to add to our arsenal to pay for these projects. So that would not be a negative or downside of it.
Right. So you're not seeing any downside to updating fees? And then we're not, we're not deciding priority order tonight, right? We are just putting the possibilities on the list, and then as they come forward to us, it comes to council to then approve the use of the TIF account?
That is correct. This is not a priority list. This is just a menu of projects that have been identified to help mitigate traffic congestion in the city from new development. And up to the will, council, which ones go first?
Okay. Thank you. That's it for right now.
Any other questions? Councilmember Anstead?
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the things I'd like to, if you could pop up in order for me to ask my question, the deficiency map with the red, the red, can you put that back up on the slide? Thank you. So one of the, I mean, when I look at the map, inside the city or in the main part of the residential area right now, that I see that has a red square dot on the intersection, is that it looks like it's the intersection of T O Boulevard and Canaan Road. Is that correct? Is that the intersection?
The one on T O is orange. That's on the upper. So the middle, where it's yellow, is the freeway 101. And so if you go towards the top, there's an orange segment with an orange dot. That's Thousand Oaks and Canaan.
Yes, that's what I was asking about.
Yes.
And so that's, I thought it was red. I guess I've seen it. So--
What, I'm sorry.
That intersection is highlighted as deficient, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so what is the, what I did not see on the list of the TIF projects was any expansion, like a turn lanes or anything. I didn't see a list on the, or a project on the list of changes to that intersection.
That is correct. It's part of the, I'm sorry, part of the Canaan Corridor project, and it is, the project is continuing as far as ongoing analysis. And we are currently in the P A E D phase, which is the Project Approval Environmental. And once, and it's fully funded by Measure R and M. That's why it wasn't included in this TIF Nexus Report. But as it moves along and more details are solidified, by the time that happens, probably a next, a new Nexus study could be done, and it could be included then. I would recommend to be included then.
Okay. So we can always add it later, is what you're saying?
Absolutely. Yeah.
And then on the, on the TIF thing, I mean, the proposal, after I read it, I realized that basically we're raising rates, we're tripling rates. From where they are now, we're basically tripling them. Is that correct, assumption?
We're increasing, but it's important to note that the rates you're comparing to that are 2011 rates.
I understand. I understand. But I just want to, so we're all on the same page here.
Correct.
So obviously, one of the things that I don't think that you mentioned on the, like, you were, you were asked about the downside. I mean, I just, I mean, I, it took me a little while to think about, too, what is the downside of raising these rates. But one of the considerations, I guess, of raising the rates is that a developer, if they wanted to build housing or, or build a new shopping center, one of the things they would do is they would pencil it, pencil it out and see whether it, it made sense. And one of the factors that they're going to take into account is the, these fees, these TIF fees that they have to pay. Is that true?
If I was a developer, yes, that would be part of the financial plan analysis for their project in consideration, yes.
So the impact could be, possibility could be that there might be less development on the sites because developers would find that it doesn't pencil out with the triple the TIF fees. Is that a possibility?
I, I would say that possible, but if it's something, a project they feel is important, and it's an area that they would want, City of Agora Hills, I feel like they would make it work. Yeah. And with the mitigation fees and being placed in projects that would mitigate traffic, that's a plus for a project.
Okay. But you think, again, this goes to supposition, but I mean, the last city council did not raise the fees. Do you think maybe one of the reasons why they didn't raise the fees is maybe they didn't want, they were trying to encourage development, they didn't want to discourage development from raising the fees?
Since I wasn't involved, it's hard for me to answer. I wouldn't be able to answer that question.
No. Can you tell me the surrounding cities here at Agora Hills, what are the current TIF fees for, like Calabasas, West Lake Village, the other surrounding cities, Malibu? How do they rate compared to the proposed rates that you have? Are they more, are they in line with our fees, or are our fees would be significantly more than theirs?
We are in line. I mean, we're probably in the middle. We're not the lowest, but we're also not the highest. In the report itself, in Appendix A, we do provide a comparison. It's, it's hard to compare some of the fees because they have, the way that they structure them is a little different than we do. But if I look at it on the average, we're about right on par.
For the fees that we've proposed?
For the fees that we have proposed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes, thank you. And this was a question, my question is something I raised in committee, and you provided an answer, but I just thought it might be helpful for the council regarding this, the TIF impacts on ADUs. And I was wondering if you could explain, and I have the email right here, too, if you want me to explain, if that would be easier, but about why, why ADUs don't really qualify for TIF fees?
Well, it's not that they don't qualify. We don't, we don't actually charge them right now. We don't levy those.
Sorry, I rephrased that. You're right. I apologize.
And I'm going to apologize. I don't actually have the notes, but I know that our community development director's here. But I know that we, on average, get about 10 of them. And of the 10, maybe two might meet the qualifications of when we would charge the TIF, which I think is on a square footage of 750 square feet, something like that. And even with those two, from what I understand, they may find exceptions or change their projects, so they end up not qualifying to get charged a TIF.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Moving on. Now, do I open for public hearing? Public comments? So do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay. All right. Sorry. Oh, I'm gaveling in public comments, and I'm closing public comments. All right. Before closing the, oh, I shouldn't have closed it. Before closing the public hearing, do any councilmembers have any further questions of staff? No? There be no further questions. I will now close the public hearing. Sorry about that. We'll now move on to deliberations. Do we have, who would like to start? Any volunteers?
I'd be happy to, since this was, and I am so grateful to be on the subcommittee because Jeremy, Jeremy, you got, Jeremy, you got like office hours with these guys and with the consultants. And so they did a phenomenal job of explaining what is super, super complicated. And I am a big fan of what we are doing now. These fees have not been raised since 2011, and it's to the detriment of our residents in Agora Hills and the benefits that we could be having for, for our residents with these fees. It gives me a great deal of comfort that we are in line, even a little bit low, which is fine. And I super love the change in focus that instead of, and I'm paraphrasing from the terrific staff report, that instead of doing widening of roadways, which made a whole lot of sense in a whole lot of times, instead of doing that, we're reducing vehicle demand by alternative modes of transportation. So just like that whole Lindero Canyon thing was a win-win-win, this is a win-win-win because it supports alternative transportations, it supports the environment, it will help us support our bicycle plans, our pedestrian safeway, other transit access. So I think this is a fantastic plan, a fantastic resolution. I can absolutely support it. The consultants were terrific. This is, I confess, like, I'm so glad that there's not a multiple choice test on your studies. Like, I 100% would fail that. But in, in the conversations that we had, I came to understand that you guys get this and that the analysis that you put together is super solid. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
Yeah, I'll go next. Echoing a lot what Councilmember Anderson said, this was extremely complex. We spent a lot of time studying this. Some of the things I want to highlight was I, as was mentioned, I appreciate that we're taking a really solid look at alternate forms of transportation besides vehicles. I think that's really important. I think this was long, long overdue, and it's important that this is not incentivizing development. This is not locking in development. This is preparing for the future if these developments come forward. And what was said to me that was really interesting is that this list is like a menu that we've created. We've locked in a menu of options so that we're ready once something comes forward. And we've, we've set our, our eyes on what we would want to see implemented, but not quite the priority that, which is still up to the council. And so I think this is a win all around. I can make all the findings. I appreciate the work that went into this and ready to move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Thank you. Well, traffic and congestion, I would say, is the number one issue that I hear about in Agora Hills. And as our public commenter today mentioned, concerns about future density only exacerbates that, and it's a huge, huge issue. And somebody needs to invest in the infrastructure that increased density brings. The state has taken a lot of that decision-making away from us, but we have a lot of the burden to adjust to that density. And I don't think that city dollars and city public funding should be the sole source of adapting to that funding. I mean, I think that it's reasonable to share costs, that if, you know, public funds can be part of the solution, but they shouldn't be all of the solution to fund the, the increased impact from private funding and development. So I do think it's reasonable to share costs. I think that these fees are long overdue to be adjusted to current rates. So I'm absolutely in favor of that. I know budget times are hard for everyone, but they're hard for public entities, too, just like we saw at our last meeting at four o'clock today with our budget goals. So I'm, I'm all in favor of adjusting the fees to current rates and sharing that burden. And then to Councilmember Anderson's point, you know, these projects are in line with our climate action and adaptation plan and goals. So I am prepared to move forward. And I thank my fellow council members on the committee for taking the heavy lift on this. And I thank Charmaine and Nate for talking me through this, and thank you to the consultants for a very clear report. So ready to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstead?
I think, I think it is a very complicated subject, and I was kind of shocked almost that we were raising these fees triple. I mean, I, the fact that we had not looked at or had not raised them in the last 14 years is also eye-opening as well. So, but in the interest of the public, I do think it's, it's actually a positive. There is a lot of positive public works, projects that you've included in there. But I mean, obviously, one of the things that I do want to revisit, if in intersections, we, that we need to change intersections, I want to make sure that we include that in the TIF going forward. And I was glad to hear, too, I wasn't sure what the surrounding rates were in the cities around us, and I wasn't sure if we were going to be the highest one. And so I was definitely really happy to hear, we wouldn't be the highest or the lowest. And so we're right in the, in the middle there. So I think it's, it's great. I think it's a, it's definitely for the right reasons. And I think hopefully developers, if they are considering putting apartments or condos here, that they will see that it's worth it to do it here in Agora Hills because that we're going to have all these improvements that we're going to be able to make with those, those monies. So I'm ready to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with everything my fellow council members have said this evening. I, too, sat down with our city manager because I, I needed someone to guide me through some of this because it was heavy reading. And yes, I mean, developers need to contribute to the infrastructure of a city that they're adding residents to. So I think it's very important that we keep our rates current with everybody else in the surrounding area because there is a lot of work to be done. And as we know, we're a very small city in terms of surface area, and so infrastructure is vital for all of us. So, I mean, I wish we could charge them all, but I'm happy to go ahead. I can make all these findings, and I'm ready to vote on this. So there's nothing else further to say? So do, let me see where I am now. Okay. Before, is it, we're still in the public hearing, right?
No. Councilmember, I think perhaps we're ready for the motion. Councilmember Anderson?
Okay, I'm, so we're here. Okay. So I will now call for a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 25-2101. Will the maker of the motion and a second state your names?
So moved. Councilmember Anderson.
Chris Anstead, or City Councilman Chris Anstead, seconds.
Thank you. I will defer to the city clerk for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is a discussion, to continue the discussion of City Gateway Entry Monument Details for the Canaan Road, Agora Road Ultimate Intersection Improvements Project. This was continued from April 23, 2025, when we missed having Councilmember Anderson with us. I will defer to the Director of Public Works, City Engineer Charmaine Yambo for the presentation.
Hello again. The item tonight is a continuation of the discussion on the City Gateway Entry Monument. The City Gateway Entry Monument is the final element needed to complete the plans, specification, and estimate package for the construction of the Canaan Road, Agora Road Intersection Project. Staff is giving city council feedback and final direction on the number of monuments to be included with this project. This slide provides a summary of the final disposition on the design details of the City Gateway Monument from the April 23 city council meeting. The last remaining detail to be decided was a number of monuments to be included. At the February 4th Public Works Subcommittee, the Subcommittee proposed one Gateway Entry Monument facing the northbound vehicles and-- monument facing the northbound vehicles on Canaan Road to be considered by the city council. At the April 23 city council meeting, the city council was split, two to two, on whether to include the southbound exit monument, and directed staff to continue the discussion with the full city council in attendance. The next two slides will show renderings of the northbound and southbound monuments, with the design details directed by the city council at the April 23 city council meeting. This slide shows a rendering of the northbound monument. You will see it has the message "City of Agora Hills" and gateway to the Santa Monica Mountains. The city's oak leaf logo is on the bottom right, and it includes lava rock with no landscaping. This slide shows a rendering of the southbound monument. You will see it has the message "Entering the Santa Monica Mountains." Again, the city's oak leaf logo is on the bottom right, mirroring what the northbound had. It includes lava rock and no landscaping. The area in the red box is where the monuments would be located, on Canaan Road, just north of Cornell Way. The remaining detail to be decided for the gateway monument is whether to include one or two monuments. If one monument, the northbound direction only would be included. If two, one northbound and one southbound. The next slide will show kind of a rendering of what that might look like. This slide provides renderings of one versus two monuments. The rendering on the top depicts one monument for the northbound direction. The rendering on the bottom shows two monuments with the northbound in the forefront and the southbound in the background. This concludes the presentation. Staff welcomes any question, feedback, and final direction on the number of monuments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before we move on to public comment, does any council member have any questions of staff? Councilmember Anstead.
Can you tell us the cost of each of the monuments, please?
Each monument would cost in a range of $50,000 to $100,000, depending on the size and the details behind it.
Where would the money be coming for the, pay for that?
The project is funded, fully funded, by Measure M, Metro Measure M.
And if we, if we spent, let's say it was $100,000 per, if we spent $200,000, would we be able to use that Met, that Measure R for other things in the city, if we didn't spend it on the monument?
The Measure, the Metro Measure R and M funds are for transportation projects, and that would have to be, you know, it would have to be approved and go through the COG. It couldn't go to just any project, it would have to be a transportation project.
Transportation.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, can I follow up on Councilmember Anstead's question? So we just approved these projects with the TIF fees. Could funding, if we didn't spend all of this funding on these monuments, could some of this funding go to pay for some of those projects?
Not the way it stands. The, it would have, the Measure R and M funds are funds that are related to highway improvements, so there has to be a nexus of the project to improvements on the highway.
Are there other projects that have a nexus on the highway that we would imagine being able to expend those funds on?
The one project that is on the metro long-range plans is the Canaan Corridor.
Any, do you have any questions? So I do, so when you say that Measure R and M can only be for highway improvements, does a park-and-ride lot constitute highway improvement, because it's reducing traffic on the highway?
I believe they have used those funds for those types of projects, yes.
So if we, because I know we have a park-and-ride lot, we're talking about creating another one, so, we, if we didn't use it on this, we could use it on, the funds wouldn't go away, they'd be available for other projects, correct?
That is correct. And we would have to propose it and go through our COG region and then up through metro.
Right, okay. But this allocation is for Agora Hills, so, no? Or, I mean, would somebody else get to use it if we didn't, or can we apply for a different highway improvement project? That's really my question, I think.
The city receives an allocation every year. It's roughly about $3.4 million, something like that.
Right.
And it's for the city, and if we have an eligible project, we would submit it, and it would be appropriated through metro for that project.
Okay, so at this point, do we have any other projects in the works, or is this the only one for these funds? And the funds will disappear if we don't use them?
They will not disappear, however, we have Canaan-Agora intersection, which is the one before us today, and the Canaan Corridor, and there is Measure R and M that goes to the Ladyface Greenway project.
So, I'm just trying to figure out, if we did one rather than two, would that then help one of our other ongoing projects?
It could if we transferred the funds over to it, but that's still, that is actually a process that has to happen through the COG and through metro. It's not like you remove it and it goes automatically.
No, I understand, but is there time to do that, or is there no time to do that? So if we didn't use it for this, it would be gone? That's my question.
No, that would not be gone, but we could, yes, there's a time for it, and we could apply for it within a year. Usually you have to, it's a year process that you have to transfer the funds.
Okay.
Or propose to transfer the funds to another project.
All right, thank you. All right. So, I will now defer to the city clerk to see if there's any public comments.
We have not received any written correspondence, nor do we have any speaker cards.
Thank you. Does any council member have any further questions? So we'll now move on to deliberations. Since it's your committee, Councilmember Anderson, do you want to start?
I would be happy to, and I apologize for not being here and having to bring this back up. As many of you know, my husband had a friend getting married in South Africa, and so, I'm wearing my giraffe scarf in honor of that. And I understand it was a robust discussion and clearly a split vote, and I can certainly understand the arguments for having two monument signs, but in these really difficult budget times, even though we're restricted in what we're allowed to spend this funding on, in these difficult budget times and this upside-down world that we're in, where we can't be sure of funding going forward, and the priority for me really being, and I, and it's so funny, Charmaine, when you put that sign up for, you know, the northbound and you're entering Agora Hills gateway, I felt so proud about that. And so, that's a priority for me, and so, my vote would be to just have one monument sign and not have two, and to go with the recommendation that we had from the subcommittee.
Councilmember Klein Lopez.
Well, I was one of the proponents of two signs, for a few reasons. One is just visually, I think it's a beautiful balance, and secondly, I think it's a sign, you're saying you get emotional when you see the sign. Well, I get emotional when I see, you know, as I go into the mountains, and I think it's a sign of respect for the Santa Monica Mountains, for the unincorporated areas, and for this gateway that we proposed to be, we were proposing to be the gateway, but we're not celebrating that as you enter that gateway. So, I can count the votes, but I would propose the two, I mean, I would, I'm a proponent of the two, because I also get very moved going into those mountains, and I think it's a sign of respect for them.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf.
So yeah, I was also on Team Two, and so, also can count to three, yeah, that's the map. My concern now is, is it going to say "Welcome to City of Agora Hills" and gateway to the Santa Monica Mountains? So I just feel like it's going to be a little cramped, and it's, we're not, you're not like entering, for all the reasons that Councilmember Klein Lopez articulated was where I went with two signs, and I think it's going, if it does say, I think that the current version of one sign looks too crowded, but I'm also happy we're getting a sign, so, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstead.
I haven't changed my mind, I'm still on the single sign, and for the reason of, again, I just want to be fiscally responsible. I feel like one is enough for entering the city, and that's what we're most concerned about. And I think it looks great, I'm really happy with how it looks, and I think it would be a great thing to have people, as they enter the city, realize that we are the gateway and Santa Monica Mountains, and that they're entering Agora Hills, so.
Thank you. And I haven't changed my vote since the last time, so I would vote for one. But what I would say is that this isn't the end. I mean, we can always add another one, at, you know, at a future time, if we feel that we made the wrong decision.
Well, I would just say that if we were going to do two, it would, to Councilmember, to Mayor Pro Tim Wolf's point that I would have, which was the original vision, was that you would have "Welcome to Agora Hills," like, you'd have less coming into Agora Hills, and then Santa Monica Mountains going out. So, I would just say that it would change the verbiage of it, but, per the original vision, but I can count, and if there was a motion for the one, I certainly would not vote no on that.
Okay, thank you. So, I think we're ready for a motion now. I could, no further comments, correct? So, we, we're providing feedback and final direction on the city gateway entry monument conceptual design, and direct staff to proceed with the final design of the Canaan Road-Agora Road Ultimate Intersection Improvements Project with just the northbound monument at this time. I will now call for an emotion and a second to approve the staff recommendation.
City Councilman Chris Anstead, I make the motion to recommend one monument sign on the northbound sign as you enter the city.
Do I have a second? Thank you. I will defer to the city clerk for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wolf.
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester.
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you so much. So, our last discussion item tonight is a discussion regarding the city website redesign project update, and I know this is going to make Councilmember Klein Lopez very happy, so, I will now defer to Communications Manager Mary Haddad.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present another website redesign update. I know you've had a long meeting evening, but hopefully we'll end on a high note with this one. So I'm very excited to present that we're making significant progress with the website redesign project. I'll go into some background information, so here you'll see a timeline of what the project has looked like since we commenced in July, and then when it'll be ending in summer, when we hope to launch to the community. So I'll go over in detail some of the different steps that we've taken to really kick off this project, beginning with probably the, what took the longest time was the site map formulation, and I know our communications subcommittee has already seen pieces of this presentation, so I'll go over it briefly. But this site map formulation was probably the heaviest part of the project, the really fun part of the project, where this is just a snippet of a very, very long Excel sheet, where we took every single page of our current website, evaluated if there was opportunities to consolidate information, make things more visually appealing, eliminate outdated information. So I wanted to share that we were able to reduce our website pages from about 480 pages down to 290 for the new website, so about 40%, just to keep the most relevant information available to our community when the new website launches. So, we went through that process with all of our departments, they did a great job in providing feedback, giving me some opportunities to consolidate, and the entire process, we just kept in mind the user experience, minimizing clicks as much as we could, so this was a site map that we were really proud to come up with and provide to our website vendors. So the next phase was taking that site map, all of the content that we determined was necessary to move over from the current website to the new one, and that was the content migration phase. So we took some of our current pages, migrated them to the new website designed, I'll show you shortly, and just made them look a lot nicer, a lot more visual. I'll show you some examples of that in a future slide. And this was also a really great part, because we got to see the design that you saw in December really come to life. So this was another part of the project. Another important piece of the project was making sure that we got approval of our .gov URL per, I believe it's AB 1637 is the legislation that we need to comply with by January 1st of 2029. So we received approval of our .gov URL, so when the website launches, it will be .gov. That also applies to all city and council member email addresses, so we've worked really closely with our information technology team to make that conversion possible. So we've done testing, our .gov emails are working. In the subcommittee meeting, I think we tested this in real time, where Mayor Pro Tim Wolf and Councilmember Klein Lopez emailed their .gov new emails, and they were able to work. I know we experienced one little issue, so we fixed that, and now all of our .gov emails are working. What's great about this is the .gov emails are merged into our current email addresses, just to ensure that there's continuation. So as people are getting used to our new email addresses, our new website, they won't have to memorize it, it'll automatically direct to our new email addresses. So this was another big accomplishment for us. Most recently, at the end of April, we had the revised team, who's based out of Michigan, come out and they conducted website training to all staff. So we had at least one representative from each department come out, learn how to edit the website, and this just creates contingency in the organization. So if one person's not able to make edits, there's multiple people in the organization who are able to make website content edits. I do want to note that there will be workflow processes established when the website launches, so as people are going in and making edits, the city manager's office will be kind of the final point of approval, and we'll be able to see all of the edits being made on the website. But those trainings are really successful. Some of the feedback I've heard from staff was that it's a million times easier than our current website, so that's always great news for us to find ways to save time and be more efficient. So that was a great opportunity for us to get together and learn something new. Another really important phase of the project that we just completed is the quality assurance check. So the revised team went through all of our brand-new 280 pages and ensured that they're all 88 compliant, that things are working, including links, documents, everything that they transferred over. Just as a double, triple check, I also went in and departments also went into their own pages to make sure that things are looking and working well. So we just completed that process, we're feeling very good about where the website is right now. So as we're continuing to check, we'll also open to feedback from the community if there's opportunity to make any changes to the pages, but so far, the pages are looking really good. So that brings us to where we are right now, and that's the beta launch to the city council today and to any community members still with us. So I'm going to go ahead and click on this link and show you what the website is looking like. The last time I provided an update for you, you saw a still photo of the homepage design. Now, all of the bells and whistles are working on the website, and I think it looks great, but I'm open to all of your feedback today. So let's go ahead and open that up. So you'll see the first thing that opens here, and this is just a test, but this is what our future emergency notifications will be looking like. It's going to be a bright red pop-up, the first thing that people see on the website in the case of an emergency. So, and there's also an option to read more or close it out, so we'll go ahead and close that out. And this is what our homepage is looking like when it's living and breathing. You'll see we have a beautiful drone footage, video of Ladyface Mountain, our motto that we just talked about, right on theme with the last presentation. And then here is a pop-up notification that we can customize as time goes on. So I'll close that out. You'll see up at top, we have brand-new home buttons here, going to different pages. Here, we really kept in mind the user experience. When people think of words, you know, when they're looking for departments, they're thinking government. We wanted a separate special tab for our business community to easily access pages. special tab for our business community to easily access pages relevant to them, a tab just for our residents, and then also for our visitors, since we're trying to encourage economic development and visitation into the community. This is a place where people can find all things about the businesses here, events, activities, art, entertainment, the Chamber website, all kinds of things. This is also a brand-new option right here, the "how do I?" So people are able to go to this, select different categories on how they might formulate a sentence for finding services in their head. So we have "how do I apply for?" different options there, contact, find service requests, and signing up for various things here, too. So you'll see throughout, as I'm kind of clicking through, our different branding colors popping up for different things. And then we have a prominent search bar here. It's not working right now, but when the website does get published, this search bar is going to be intuitive. So I think here should, maybe not yet. But when people use the search bar to search for things, it's going to automatically populate words that are relevant to what they're looking for. And it's going to be a lot more intuitive than the one we currently have where it brings up pages that are actually relevant to the website. So I'm very excited about that. Social media buttons up here. And then this is a very exciting feature for translating the website into various languages. I believe this is working, so there we go. So it quickly translates the website into any language that people prefer. Here, we put English and Spanish, but when people click on this list, it'll show them a list of every language you can think of, and the website should automatically translate into that language. Another fun feature here is this accessibility widget, this little guy down here. So when somebody clicks on that, taking a minute here, it'll load up various ways that people can view the website that make it more ADI compliant to meet all of the needs in the community. So people can expand the text. They can create a contrast if anybody has any color seeing issues. There's different ways to increase the cursor, dyslexia-friendly pausing animations in case anybody has sensitivity to animations. So there's all kinds of options for accessibility here, which is great. We also have city highlights. I know we have that on our current website. This is just a lot more cleaner the way we want to display it. So I'll scroll down because we have quite a bit to look over here. These are quick links that take us to the most. You might recall, we had a website survey that went out in the beginning of this process. One of the questions, or a couple of the questions that we asked within that survey was to see what pages that the community visits the most. We took that feedback to create the buttons here, so they're pages that are the most visited. We also looked at our analytics on the old website to determine what we wanted our quick links to look like. So we have a few buttons here on some of the most frequently visited pages. You'll see our beautiful leaf logo and hills incorporated throughout. And then this is a very exciting feature that you just saw a photo of last time, but now it's working. We have a calendar that has the ability to be filtered into different areas that people are interested in. So Community Services will have their own calendar that automatically pops up. Same with city meetings, or if people want to see all events, that'll pop up right here, too. And then they can view the full calendar. And then here we have a city updates or a news section. And here we'll have different news articles. And then here's a social media interface where people can click through and see what we're posting on social media, even if they don't have social media pages, they can still stay in the loop. So that's exciting. And then here's just another way to reiterate how we want people to continue staying connected with us. So there's different buttons here to our newsletter, podcasts, emergency notifications, and the city directory, which I know Mayor Protem Wolf was kind of the brains behind that one. So I'll show you what some of these things look like. And then this is kind of how the homepage ends. And there's another button here where people can sign up for website notifications and receive contact information. And you'll see the .gov sprinkled throughout the website now, too. Any questions on homepage? I know it's quite a bit.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great.
She's really excited.
We're not done yet.
Oh, okay.
Wait, but there's more. So I'll go ahead. I won't go through every single page, but I will provide this link to the city council. If you guys want to take a deeper dive into the beta version of the website, we're open to feedback ahead of launch. So I'll send that to the council following the meeting. But I will go to the city directory because I know that was a special request. So we have a map here to City Hall where people can click on, automatically navigate to, same with the Recreation and Events Center. And then here we have a list of all of our staff positions, different emails, and our phone numbers. So people can easily find exactly who they're looking for. And then you'll see contact information on each department page as well. So contact information is readily available. This is also a new kind of cool feature. It's a citizen request center. So if somebody doesn't know exactly who they're looking for, they can simply drop down here, go to the department, put their name, last name, email, the issue that they want to submit, and it'll automatically go to that department's general email address, so they can address the issue accordingly. So that's another kind of cool way to just continue staying connected with our community. I'll go to an example of a department page. I'm going to put Amy on the spot. We'll go to Community Services. So each department page, the template will look something like this. We're looking for custom banner photos for each one, so it best represents each department. So that's what we're working on currently. But every department will have different buttons here. And then we've updated our department videos. You might recall, on the current website, we have some videos introducing visitors to that department page. So we've upgraded those. And it's a welcome message here. I won't play it for Amy, but it's a very nice video. And then, and then there's some more just visuals here of other important buttons, and then events pertaining to that department, and then their contact information right here. So that's an example of a department page. So yeah, that's kind of what the beta website is looking like, but happy to share it with everybody. And I'll just go through the rest of the presentation. And if there's any references that you want to go back to this, I'm happy to do so. So I'm going to go ahead and exit out of that. So next steps, we are looking to launch by our goal of summer 2025. There's a couple of things that we need to work on to get there, and I'll go over that shortly. But in the meantime, we are already starting to work on outreach materials. So you'll see an example of an asset we've created here. We also have some exciting outreach opportunities specific to our senior communities. I'm planning to work closely with our community services team to plan a senior tech day where we put these on projectors and show them how to navigate the website and different parts of the website. Our businesses, we want to do something special for them, since they will have a piece of the website that's very customized to them. And then involving our schools and showing them the website and getting their feedback as well. So we're looking forward to launching. And I'll go over what we're going to be working on in the meantime. So as part of this project, when we initially brought the website to the communications subcommittee, I believe it was back in October after we signed the agreement with our website vendor, another really important piece that was expressed at the time was updating how the community received or accessed our meeting agendas and videos. The current system right now is a third-party one that we're using with our current website vendor. And it's not the most upgraded one or the most user-friendly one. So staff has taken on this task to explore different options. There's quite a bit out in the government technology world right now, up-and-coming ones. And we demonstrated three of them. And the one that really stood out to us was AgendaLink. And this is powered by a company called Cloud Driven Solutions. We were really impressed by their demonstration. Of course, we included our Madam City Clerk in the process because she's going to be using this quite heavily. So we wanted to make sure that it was something that she also enjoyed seeing and using. So, and Kimberly liked it. I think you liked it, right, Kimberly? So we also spoke to other cities who are actively using this platform, including Brea, Buena Park, Costa Mesa, Longdale are just a couple of them. Kimberly contacted some of the city clerks from those cities. They also really enjoy using the platform. And we really enjoyed just their emphasis on customer service. I think that's something that we've kind of missed on our current website. So to have both the website vendors and our agenda management software vendors be very responsive is very refreshing. So we've also spoken to Pegasus, who is responsible for the technology streaming side of our meetings. They've also worked with AgendaLink before, so this would work with them. And I'm going to show you just what it looks like internally in example, and then externally on another city website. And the subcommittee seen this, and I think they also enjoyed it very much. So we don't have access to AgendaLink quite yet. We're still working on implementing that. But here on their website, you'll see an example of what their interface looks like on the internal side. So what this will be doing, kind of in summary, is really improving our staff report and agenda management process internally. We currently write out our staff reports. It's a very print-heavy process. It's been working great, but there's these best practices out there, where this is an all-in-one system where staff can go in, type in their staff report, and then route it to a workflow process that we determine ahead of time, depending on the department. If it's a planning commission meeting, city council meeting, and they'll go through that approval process electronically. And then we're able to compile it into this platform and then automatically publish it into the interface of the website. So this is kind of what the agenda part looks like. Our city clerk is able to go into the same system and produce minutes, different documents, approval processes. So it's a pretty user-friendly interface that we're all excited to use. And then training is coming down the line, so we're excited to see what it looks like. And then some external examples, I'm pulling up the city of Brea. So this is what their website looks like with AgendaLink embedded into it. And here they have, this is the AgendaLink external interface. And I'll show you an example of how easy it will be for somebody to view an agenda and a meeting at the same time. So I'll go to their last city council meeting. So if somebody wants to watch a meeting, it'll automatically bring up the video here. It'll show them the agenda here on the side. And then as they're navigating through, if they want to click on a very specific agenda item, let's choose one. What sounds interesting? Let's go to this one.
Zero.
So automatically go to that part of the video. It's a timestamp. And then the cool thing here is the staff report is immediately populated at the bottom here. So people can click through it and then print it in a way that's automatically formatted. A template is provided by AgendaLink, so everything looks branded and clean. And then they also have a button here for attachments, so people can automatically view the attachments as they're watching that part of the meeting as well. So kind of an all-in-one place where people can access videos, agendas, and attachments just by a click instead of digging for things. So I am open to any feedback on this as well before we move forward. This is kind of the last piece of the website project that we're working on, and we wanted to bring it before the city council, before we really dug deep into this and launched the website with this platform. But we think it's an improved way for people to access our videos and agendas, and open to your feedback or any questions that you have on this piece.
Thank you so much. That was exciting to see, finally. So before we move on to public comment, does any council member have any questions of staff? No. Seeing none, I will now defer to the city clerk. Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any written correspondence or speaker cards.
Thank you. Does any council member have any further questions? Seeing none, we'll now move on to deliberations. Councilmember Klein Lopez, off you go.
I thought you'd never ask. Well, thank you. This is obviously a very long time in the works, long time in the making. Our current vendor is inflexible. They have horrible customer service, and frankly, they didn't care about us. So the fact that we are moving to this amazingly nimble, accessible platform is just so, so wonderful. So first, I have to say, you know, really, this is everything I've been waiting for. And it wouldn't happen without Mary's leadership. So I want to just first say thank you to Mary, because we hired you for this position for exactly this. You have the vision, and you have the experience, and you have the knowledge of how to get to this point, which I think we were really just didn't have all that in one package before. So I want to give Mary kudos, and also Romero in the background for always taking my calls when I've been frustrated with our current website. So thank you for finding a new vendor or set of vendors that can really meet our needs. The most important thing for me, I love that we are streamlining this website so that it is very user-friendly. People can get to where they want to get to in fewer clicks. We will finally have a search function that will work and not take us back to 2007 agenda items, when I know we just saw it last week. I love the calendar, which, as you know, is only good as the data we put in that calendar. So we got to keep that calendar up. But I love the calendar and really appreciate that, Mary, you worked with every single department individually to sit down with them, to go through what do they need and what do they think the public needs from them. So thank you for that. I'm also very excited about the AgendaLink. It is very, I can only imagine how laborious it is for our staff to be going through this in such an inflexible set of parameters. So the fact that this is all-in-one place, that it's user-friendly on the internal side, and that it's offering our residents and visitors transparency is very, very important to me. I mean, if nothing else, we have got to be transparent with our meetings, with our votes, with our agendas. And if you're going on a government website and you can't find that public information, it really adds a level of distrust in your government. And so to me, being easy and transparent to find information online is a sign of good governance. And, you know, people come to our sites for emergencies. And the fact that for so many years, the best we could do is have this tiny bar and tiny font at the top of our website saying that there was a massive emergency is just unacceptable. And part of the massive frustration I have with our current vendors. So, you know, the fact that we can really adapt to an emergency situation and give the public the information they need, I mean, that could save lives. So to me, this is very important for our residents, for our businesses, for our visitors. And I couldn't be happier with it. And the good news is that if something isn't working right and you want to adjust it, we are in control now. We are not at the mercy of a vendor that doesn't care about us. So it's, to me, it's a living, of course, it's a living space, and we can always tweak it and make it better. And I'm really excited to see it go live or play around with it first. And thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf.
Great. I like what you said about it's a living space. This is a really big deal, Mary. You've done such a phenomenal job and had such a great attitude about something that can be so mundane. But it's so important, and it's such a tool for our residents, for the community. And there's so many things I really like about it. I think that the accessibility component is really fantastic, because that's becoming more and more important. And the fact that there was so much consideration taken on that. I love the directory. It's going to make it easier for people to find people. And I think that's going to, is a great tool. I'm just thrilled about the whole thing. You've done an amazing job, and I'm really looking forward to it. It's something that we're all very proud of. So thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
It has been a joy to watch the joy of you guys at all this. I confess, I am so tech-illiterate. Like, this, though, is the website for people like me, because it is so super easy. And Mary, I am grateful for your passion and enthusiasm and for building such a phenomenal website. And Councilmember Klein Lopez, for what I know are hundreds of hours that have gone into helping make this phenomenal. that have gone in to help him make this phenomenal. Thank you.
Councilmember Anstead.
She had me at the first screen when she popped up. I thought it was fantastic. It connected to what we were talking about. We were just debating on the monuments, and so it was perfect. It was, I think it's fantastic upgrade. And I think it's the opposite of what people think about when they go to a government website. I mean, the majority of government websites are way outdated. They're normally got information from like 1960 when you start doing a search on stuff in the website. And so this is just fantastic. I like the outreach that you've also said that you're going to try to do with the seniors. Like, I mean, those, a lot of people want to go and use our programs, and a lot of times, they have a hard time finding information on how to get to it. And you made it easy. So it's just fantastic. So I couldn't say enough great things. I think it's fantastic. Great job. Excellent job.
I only have two words. Thank you. What you've done is amazing, really. And, you know, there's been so much frustration just within the council to find things. I can imagine what the general public must find because we know where to look, and we still can't find them. So thank you so much. And also to all the departments for working with you to make this happen. So with that, I will now call for a motion in a second to approve the staff recommendation, which is to, are we just moving ahead, right? Keep going. So will the maker of the motion and a second state your names?
I will make that motion. Deborah Klein Lopez.
Mayor Protem Wolfe, I'll second.
So I'll defer to the city clerk for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wolfe.
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester.
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. So now, are there any comments from staff? Seeing none, are there any comments from city council? No, well, I have a few. First of all, I would like to announce that this Saturday, there are two local events. There's the Tapanga Banjo Fiddle Festival at King Gillette Ranch. And then at the Kaneho Creek North Park, there is a Kaneho Disabilities Fair. So I encourage you to get out and try and hit both if you can. I have now visited all the school sites in Agora Hills with the exception of Sumac. We weren't able to meet with their schedule, so we'll go to them in the fall. But it's been wonderful to visit all the sites and interact with the PFAs and the PFCs. And then last, was it last Wednesday or Thursday? Councilmember Klein Lopez and I went to Lindero Canyon for the opening of the 25 years. Time capsule, and there was a lot of anticipation, and the drums were beating, and the crowds were cheering,